All right, all right, so we'll just go ahead. The time is now one oh three. And we will start the finance up committee meeting. I want to thank Counselor Govan, who is part of the committee for joining us and Counselor Letterman for joining us. And Melanie and Lindsay from, sorry, from the Finance Department. And I honestly wear glasses, so Tim and Jerry are the only ones that I could see that's like in the front. So I have no idea who's in the back. So if you could just let us know who's joining you.
Oh, Counselor, I got pushed up to the front.
I want to know who you were, Tim, except that you spoke. Um, I would, I can't see anybody in there.
But Tina Quagley out of Sullivan is here, and so is Kathy Bono.
Okay, thank you, Tina and Kathy. I'm sorry, guys, I couldn't. All right, so um, we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you with um, the updated numbers and data. So whichever team wants to start first?
They want us to start first? Or do you guys want to go first?
You can start first. Yours is more interesting.
So Counselors, the intent for us today is to review with you the nonprofit, small business and housing categories of the ARPA funding. And we also want to review with you uh, what we've developed in terms of a map uh, for uh, that basically identifies where the funding resources have gone. Uh, geographically within the city as well. Uh, the overview of the programs looks at them relative to their total budget. The amount awarded, the remaining balance, and the actual expenditures made in each of these categories. Uh, then we'll review the pool of funding for each program as to where our spending per program has been allocated. So that we can collectively uh, look and see uh, as to categories that we might want to uh, focus on uh, more closely in the future. Uh, going forward. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy to do the high level overview relative to uh, the budget. And where we're at with each one of the programs.
Uh, so I tried to follow the budget format that the ARPA office was giving you. And the first column shows the budget we are given for each of the categories of the programs that we are now um, assisting with. Um, the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund, Build Back Springfield, the Housing, Nonprofits, Small Business, and Neighborhood Councils. So that shows you the budget we've been given, what is um, awarded and committed funds. The pending the Advisory Committee, they anticipate having an Advisory Committee within the next couple of weeks. And those applications will be um, going in front of the Advisory Committee for recommendations. And then the balance in each of the pots of money after the, now, I'm not saying that everything that's going in front of the Advisory Committee is going to be funded. Or funded at that level, but these are just to give you an idea where we are, the balance available, if those are all approved. And then the next are um, is information from UNICEF, the actual expenditures, encumbrances, and requisitions to date in each of the categories.
So the budget, small business budget is six million, and we've awarded four million. How did you guys come up with the six million nine oh six, six fifty?
That's a finance related question. We were provided the budgets.
How did financing come up with that for the small businesses?
So those were totals that were discussed with the mayor. They've been discussed with the mayor for a while, and these were the amounts that, based on um, what's been awarded, what's left to award. These were the amounts that we came down to.
Okay, so the awarded committed funds plus what equals the, plus all the, no, it doesn't equal that. The awarded plus pending and balance available is the six on, six nine?
Yes.
So the mayor has said we're only going to give six nine oh six, six fifty into small businesses at this point?
Yeah, that's the breakdown of the budget as of right now. Not to say that that would change at some point for some reason, but as of right now, just for us to be able to plan and project out the remaining ARPA funds, that's what we have in place right now.
So what's the, um, I'm sorry, Tim.
Counselor, if I might, I, I, I think that those are ongoing budgets in terms of, you know, here's the allocation for that particular program at this point in time. If there was a sense that there was some dramatic need for additional assistance, there is some level of flexibility to provide additional assistance in, in the category.
So this helps you your avail, the available balance?
Okay.
Let's still give out.
Well, it's not that, because I know that we have a hundred and twenty eight million dollars of ARPA funds. So I'm just trying to figure out um, what the total amount available would be, not based on any pot. And why the number is six nine, because it was never a number before. It was just said to us before that um. Until the money runs out, folks can apply, blah, 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 like that. So now that I see that. They put balances in each category. I was just trying to figure out how that came about. So I think um, I was a little confused. Um, Counselor Govan, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my question, I guess, is regarding the small business pot of money, um, what would be considered a small business?
Under five hundred employees.
Under five hundred employees. And does that small business category include the new businesses?
It does not.
Oh, so, and that's not on the list?
No, we're working on the, we're, we're trying to clear the small business applications as quickly as possible, Counselor, and then
Okay.
our attention to, we've gone through some of the, the new businesses, a- as you can imagine, that's a little bit more complex. Because a lot of those are home businesses and sole proprietor businesses. Um, so they're going to take a little bit more time for us to go through. Um, but the, the thought process was to clear as much as we possibly could to get to award on the small businesses.
Okay, great. And just what, just for your um, point of information, I just had breakfast at Hannah's, and she's very excited. Um, that someone reached out to her finally, she says. So she's excited and looking forward to it.
We have her application. We just sent her an email this morning, just asking for one more document, um, and we'll be ready to review.
Excellent, and, and thank you again. Um, this is a, this is a great project. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just to add to that, though, you know, that was a situation where another party had actually done the intake. And so that application, and for some reason, it didn't actually get into the city system. And, and you know, that, that's a, a concern for sure when a third party's out there with that.
Absolutely. And Tim, I got the full earful today from her about that. With that other third party. Um, for your information, uh, Chairman, Chairwoman, um, Whitfield. Hannah's is right up the street from my office on Main Street in Indian Orchard. She's been in business for over twenty one years. Um, I'm not sure, I think, she might be Portuguese, I'm not sure, but excellent breakfast and lunches.
Alright, you know, I'm hungry, that's why I asked you. I'm hungry, I'm not eating today. Um, thank you, Counselor Govan. Um, okay, so I think it's great that you're actually handling the small businesses because it kind of like aligns with your department. I just wanted to say that. And um, not that, not that finance wasn't doing a great job with the ARPA team. I'm not taking anything away from you guys, but I think it just kind of aligns with the work that they do um, in the economic development, um, economic development side, so. Now, okay, I'll let you finish with your report out, Kathy, and.
Give, give the time constraints for um, Counselor Letterman. Um, let's move to the breakdowns and per category, so we can see where the funding has actually been allocated.
Madam Chair.
Oh, breakdowns per category for the non-profit?
Yeah, just going to the next one that you were going to go into anyhow.
Okay, so.
I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say briefly, I, I appreciate the consideration, but certainly don't rush on my account. Because either way, I'll have to leave at one thirty, and I can always review it later.
And we'll definitely send you to all the counselors a, a copy of the presentation.
So before you continue, Kathy, one more thing is that we don't have the list of the names on this one, on this spreadsheet. And we had them, and we had neighborhoods and all that type of stuff on the report that um, Melanie used. That information is important to us, so um, if we could add that information back, that'd be helpful.
Okay, yeah, we will work with her on trying to get that.
Did not, it didn't change because we haven't awarded anything since the last meeting, but we'll absolutely get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here, this is the small business program. There's two hundred and eighty-two applications received. Of those two hundred and eighty-two, about forty percent of them have been reviewed or processed in some way. And then you can see the status of where they are in that process by both percentage and numbers of applications. And then we also just have a breakdown of the.
Can you go back one more, one more? Can you go back? I was just thinking, I wanted to look at all the columns, because it's different. I was used to seeing it in another, sorry about that. Pending, what is your committee, okay? Contracted. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then again, in small business, this is just a breakdown of the funding and where it's gone. So for non-minority businesses, they've received twelve percent of the awarded funding. Whereas minority-owned businesses have received eighty-eight percent of the awarded funding. Um, and then you can see the average award of what's been awarded so far. So for non-minority-owned businesses, that's, the average award is about seventy-four thousand. Whereas minority-owned businesses, the average award is about eighty-nine thousand.
This is just small businesses, because I know that Big Y is on, got a million, so the numbers don't quite.
No, it's just small business.
It's just small business.
Okay, who's handling big business?
I, I, I don't know what category, uh, we don't have a category for big business.
Well, it's going to be any organization that has over five hundred employees. They're not considered small businesses, so who's handling like the um, hotels that got awarded and the Big Ys? And who's handling those? Because we still want to make sure that we give um, real information to the constituency. And this is only um, given the details on small businesses.
They, they, neither hotel, um.
Um, actually, one of them is in here.
Well, i- i- in terms of employees, neither, neither facility does not qualify as a small business.
We don't, we don't have anyone.
So my question is like, how are we going to see data on businesses that are over what you consider small businesses? So if they have more than five hundred employees and they apply for ARPA, where are we going to get that data from?
That, that would be a finance question, because we don't have a program that's, that's dealing with anything but small business.
Oh, so Big Y and all those are considered small businesses?
Why, to be clear, Big Y is in the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund. Uh, we don't have that chart here. We can make one and produce that for you. We're happy to do that. Um, to be clear. Other hotel that's not in this category, I, I think finance probably has to speak to that. That's, I don't.
That would be merit.
Yeah, yeah.
The Marriott, Marriott's under five hundred employees.
They're under five hundred. Well, they're not, but there, there's, that isn't, isn't in this chart, yeah.
But their data.
It's under different programs, Counselor. So we have the Build Back Better, and then we also have the NERF program. Um, this is just specific to, we just kind of coordinate the information specific to the nonprofit, small business, and households. Um, that we usually discuss in this meeting. So if you wanted more of that information, we can get that for you. We'll just get it for you next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. I mean, I'm just, I like the way that, I'm, I'm glad that you guys got this um, document. But I actually like the way that it was presented to us before, because we can see more of the raw data. And I think I like seeing the raw data. I like seeing the neighborhoods. I like seeing who the organizations are. Um, because when they contact us, like, for example, a small business had contacted me, and they wasn't on the um, on the report. So I reached out to Melanie, and she was like, oh, it, for some reason, it just didn't calculate it or didn't pick it up. And so, um.
We can review, Counselor, all the information in terms of what's, what's backing up. The, the detail that we're providing you with the specific applicant, the address of the applicant, that, the, the data that you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
But this is to actually give you an overview as to what the cat, what's the category? And it, where the category is in terms of its awards.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to agree with Counselor Whitfield. Um, I actually don't really care what the name of the program is. I would like a breakdown in terms of big businesses and small businesses and nonprofits. In terms of how much they are receiving, and then a demographic breakdown. I, I, I don't necessarily see the relevance in the name of the program, per se, although I understand that that's how you all categorized those previously. Does that make sense? Can we get that information?
And I just think I confuse everybody with big business, because I was just like, I feel like the number was larger before. And so when I said Big Y and those guys, I guess they're still under five hundred employees to be considered small business to even apply for the program. So there's like no big business, um, unless they, I, I don't know, unless they get.
However you break it down, small business and other, I mean, I, I don't, I, I, I don't know. I assume, because when I think of small business, uh, I don't necessarily think of the Big Ys of the world, the Marriotts of the world, the La Quintas of the world. That, that, that's not what I think about. But if there's a way in which you can categorize uh, everybody. Um, and not necessarily by program, uh, but why, by what type of entity they are. I'd love to see those numbers as well, because to Counselor Whitfield's point, this may not be telling the entire picture. And, you know, I just would love to see those numbers in businesses incorporated.
Thank you. We, we will leave that to finance as the, they're dealing with the overall program. We're dealing with specific programs that have already been established, and where those programs are. And small business is one of the categories that we're dealing with. Um, so, you know, this is a report out on relative to that particular category. Um, I understand your point of looking at, you know, the, the overall ARPA program. Uh, uh, I, I completely understand that. Um, but this is a subset of that.
Understood.
One of the things I could clarify is the reason for the subset is we're really looking at eligibility categories. So even when we talk about what a small business is, it's because that's how Treasury has defined small business. So our mindset, because we're in the place of saying, let's make sure we fund allowable things, is we're putting them into allowable buckets. So that's just how, so you know how we developed which buckets we're reporting out of.
Got it. Um. Lindsay, is my ass that, is my ass possible? Uh, is it, or, or no? Um, I understand where folks are, are coming from. I get it. Um.
We just need to, we just need to coordinate how we're presenting this to you. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
We're just gonna, moving forward, we'll just present the entire ARPA budget, and you can see everything.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, um.
So do you want me to move on to the housing programs, or do you not want to look at those?
I, I want to look at them.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, we have nonprofit up next. Why don't I bring that up?
It's just confusing, because we weren't used to looking at the data this way, so.
Well, I, I, I actually think it gives you more specific insight as to the programs. And where, where the funding in the programs is going, and how much of it is going out.
Necessarily care about the amounts than I care about who is getting what and in what areas. I think that's more important to me than um, the numbers, per se. Because when we get asked about applications, it's more like, they don't tell us how much that they apply for. They say, this is who our business are. We haven't heard anything, where you, where they're located and things like that. So while, while this is important to know how much we have left in the bucket, I, I like to dig a little bit deeper. And see who we're talking about and where they're located.
But in fairness, I, I think one of the biggest questions that's come to you as elected officials is, overall, where is this in the process? And applications received relative to, I, I believe that we're in nonprofits now. We're, we're looking at, you know, forty-eight percent of the applications have uh, been reviewed at this point. We still have work left to do on fifty-two percent of that.
Yes.
And then, then you have an understanding, okay, we're telling you that we, we've touched forty-eight percent of the applications. The status in the process then tells you where they're at in the process.
And I do think at this point, um, we are starting to assign specific contact people to each program. So if you're getting inquiries from specific businesses or nonprofits about their status. It would probably make the most sense for them to be referred to those contact people, so that they can actually get back to them.
I agree. Thank you. We agree on a hundred percent. Hundred and ten percent. Thank you. Okay.
So that, that way we can actually, and then when we're talking to them, we can say to them, actually, we have your file here. We need a couple more documents from you. These are the things we need. At least they haven't heard from us at that point in the process.
Well, send that, send that referral list over or contact list when you get it. And probably the best news I heard today so far. Uh, Counselor Hurst has his hand up real quick, and then we'll let you guys finish your presentation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I think this information is, is, is excellent. Um, I just want to make sure that when we're talking about this information, that we're including everybody that needs to be in this particular slide or category are in there. Um, when I look at nonprofits, is New North Citizens Council an award that they receive in here?
So is New North Citizens Council in what?
Because I know I felt like they were in a different category before this.
Yeah, so you're talking about the two and a half billion. Yes, no, that is under the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund. And I am realizing that I didn't do a spreadsheet, a tracker for that, because I haven't had to do one previously. But I will be sure to have one for the next one, and that will show those.
And we could actually, so, and, and include that in, in the, in the presentation that we send over to you.
Yeah.
But, but just so you understand, like, that two point five million might be a significant amount as it relates to the overall total that nonprofits have received. Which is why, for me, it's important for it to be in these particular numbers. And I'd imagine for you all, when you start talking about, you know, from a, from a diversity standpoint, who's getting what. It also would help better reflect who's actually being served. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, well, I, I, I guess the, the, the issue, Counselor, is that their award is coming out of a different pool of funding than the nonprofit. So that's coming out of the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Program. So, you know, we, 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 it's in that program. And in terms of the report out of the overall, in term, in what you're looking for, it definitely will be reflected in that. But it, it's not reflected in the nonprofit category, because that's not how the application came in.
Got it. Um, got it, some, got it. Um, so hopefully in the overall, they all will be included in one. I'm not so sure that that has occurred before previously, but if we can get it, that'd be great.
That's right, Counselor, because previously, um, we were really focusing on the finance-driven categories. And the NERF program um, was Echo Dev, so we didn't really include that information in our numbers. So now that we're kind of um, have everything together, we can probably do that.
I, I completely agree, Counsel. We'll make sure that it's integrated, uh, so that you have, you know, a complete report of all of the programs. Um, and that everybody's reflected in those numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I meet with to go over this report one-on-one, because I want to drill down? Who should I call? Tina?
She, she wants to go over it one-on-one.
Oh, we, we can just set up a zone, a separate zone, and we'll all be here for you.
Throw it with you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, so again, this is sort of the nonprofit. There, this, again, similar to what we've done. We've got a total of a hundred and sixteen applications. Forty-eight percent of those have been reviewed or processed in some fashion. And then you can see here on this second chart sort of where they are in the process. And that's also broken down up here by actual numbers. And then also for nonprofit, we've put together a chart that breaks it down by category. Um, so in terms of what are the actual public services that have been funded with, through the nonprofit program? And how much funding has gone into each category? And you can kind of also see that broken down on this pie chart.
Okay, can you go up? Um. To the top? Because pie charts don't, they, uh, they don't help me a lot.
They don't work for you?
No, um, but they might work for, for others, because I'm looking at.
Just, sorry, I'm just trying to play with my screen so I can see everything that's up. Okay.
So for example, Counselor, it, one of the things that popped out to us is that our, our nonprofit funding with regards to senior issues is, is low. Mm-hmm. So I think it, it's at one percent, if I recall correctly. Um, and, you know, going forward to, as, or two point three. So as we're going forward, looking, you know, if, if we're determining that, you've been, obviously, there was a lot of impact relative to the senior population with regards to COVID. We, we should be looking at trying to prioritize that category.
Mm-hmm.
And funding that goes towards that category out of the nonprofit program.
And.
The low-high categories is, on the low side, you awarded thirty thousand, and on the high side, you awarded, well, I'm looking at services line. You awarded five hundred thousand?
Yes.
That's the amount of the award.
Yeah.
So in, in terms of, uh, uh, can, can you go back?
Yep.
So for Arts and Cultural Services, what we're saying is that the low award was seventy-five thousand, and the high award was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
In that, in that particular category. And the average award was coming out at a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred.
Well, somebody got seventy-five, and somebody got one fifty, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that is an accurate assessment.
I think the reason we did this, one was to give you an idea of the different categories of public services that the nonprofit program is supporting. But also to help guide us as we're making decisions around how funding should be prioritized going forward, right?
Yeah, that's helpful, but what's more helpful is I want to make sure there's a balance in what organizations are awarded. Um, you know, just to be fair, we, we need to make sure that, that there's no favoritism. So I don't know if under, like, if you could do a subcategory under Arts and Cultures and just list who the organizations are.
No, well, wha- what we're saying is that for each of these categories, Arts and Cultural Services, we'll tell you all of the awards that have been made. And you'll, you'll be able to see who exactly got what.
Yeah, that's what I.
And the same for recreational services and youth development. You'll, you'll be able to see all of the awards in those categories.
And we also see what they requested, or you don't have that information?
No, we have what they request.
We have it, yeah. I, we just have to figure out how to put it together, and how long it's going to take us to kind of assemble everything.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But, but let's deal with the, the awards, and, you know, then we'll build upon the information that you, you want from there.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, because it, like, community services, when I looked at that line, it was like a vast difference between the high end and the low end. Somebody got one point six million, and someone got fifteen, fifteen, was it fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Yes.
Fifteen thousand and one point six million. I'm like, so why, who got one point six million? Who is that? And who got fifteen thousand? Like, who is that? Like, who are? And who got fifteen thousand? Like, who is that? Like, who are they? Why did, why is it so vastly different?
Yep.
Okay.
So then moving on to the housing programs, again, a similar sort of overview. We've gotten a hundred and forty applications of those, a hundred and forty. About forty-one percent of those have been reviewed or processed. We have four of those under contract now, twenty-five of those are in the inspection phase. Nineteen, eh, we've got one that's income qualified and certified and all set, ready to get scheduled for inspection. That's being coordinated now. Nineteen where that income certification and the tax certification is in process. And then fifty-eight of those still remaining to go through and work with the owner to make sure that um their income meets the requirements and we have all the necessary documents from them.
So I think it's important for the counselors to understand that on the housing side of the equation, the upfront piece is a little bit clunky and why don't you just give them?
Yeah. Talked about this before, that sort of, it's not as simple as their application comes in, rate they're eligible, contract the funding. What happens is their application comes in, first we make sure that their income meets the the program requirements and the treasury requirements. Um, and that is, that involves typically some back and forth, like they provide us all the documents we asked for, but there's, we have yet to do an income certification in my twenty years here, where we haven't had to go back to an uh an applicant and say, hey, can you explain this? Or can you give me some more information on this particular docu-document you produced? Um, and we do that income certification in accordance with Part Section Eight income certification process. And that's how and why we do that. Then what happens is um the projects, each project as it becomes eligible in terms of income then gets referred for an actual inspection where we can go out and draft up specifications and determine what we're going to ask contractors to bid on. Once that's done, it then goes out to bid for contractors to bid on. Once that happens, then we go to contract. And then the funding gets paid out as the actual construction progresses. And we have someone that goes out and verifies for the homeowner that the work is done in accordance with the specifications and that the amount that the contractor is requesting is aligned with the work that has been completed.
So the the long and short of that is to explain, you know, that the where you look at four that are under contract, we need to recognize that represents a couple of months worth of work at the front end.
Yeah. And the four that are under contract went through all the income qualifications and all that stuff?
Yes.
They did.
Done with all that.
They're good, yeah.
Yeah.
And the ones that denied or dropped out, um, how many were denied and how many dropped out?
Uh, that off the top of my head, I don't know. So we have we have nine that have either denied or dropped out. The actual breakdown, I I'd have to go into the data and get you that number.
Okay, um, thank you.
Yeah.
And the only reason for the denial, well.
At this point is that they don't meet our income requirements. Yeah, but at some point, as we're going through that income certification process, if folks are just non-responsive to our requests, we will give them some kind of timeline in which they need to respond by, if they continue to be non-responsive to our requests, we we obviously provide them notification, an opportunity to respond. And then we may have to remove them from the program. There are time constraints on the funding. Obviously, we recognize that these are long projects to get underway and that there are folks waiting behind them. So if we ultimately have to move people out of the program because they're non-responsive to us, they will also be pictured in that category.
And I think it's also important for the counselors to understand that um these these programs were wildly popular and eh the demand on the program uh was eh eh exceeded uh expectation. Um, and ultimately, we had to close off applications after how long?
Uh, two months.
Yeah, so I mean, the the program was only open for two months and we had already expect or already recognized that we were going to expend, you know, all of the allocation that we had for that category.
Well, closing the program, um, just to regroup sounds like a good, smart thing to do.
We we agree with you, counselor.
Counselor Hurst.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a quick question. Who is responsible for getting the contractor? Is that the individual who applies or are they choosing from a pool?
No, so what happens is we have a pool of contractors and you, um, city councilors may have noticed, I have sent out email blasts to try to get that word out. We have a fairly large pool of contractors at this point. Um, and so we drop the specifications, we review them with the homeowner and then we assist the homeowner in soliciting bids from the contractors, just because what we have found in our other programs is that homeowners are struggling to get bids and are struggling to review them. So we assist them with soliciting those bids. And then typically the award is made to the lowest um responsible contractor that can move forward.
And that solicitation looks like sending an email to this very large list of potential contractors and saying, we have this job to bid on. Uh, we're doing walkthroughs.
We do a walkthrough, yeah.
We schedule a walkthrough, we invite them to come to the walkthrough, give them the specifications so they know exactly the work we we are, we have identified as what is to be done and they bid on that. Um, and and so it is, it it is large pool. It is some self-selecting though, who shows up to bid on projects and then who actually does bid on projects.
And to develop that pool, we have done all kinds of outreach, including we have pulled the list from the state of all contractors in the region that have construction supervisors licenses and home improvement contractors licenses and have done actual hard mail blasts to those folks. Um, in addition to other outreach, including advertising and local media through social media, through um various email blasts. So that's how that pool has been developed.
Have you guys sent it to the um media outlets that we always ask you to send it to? The minority one.
We have and we, I actually just got a quote from one, a couple of them to do some additional advertising to try and increase that pool.
Thank you. And I I do want to commend you on, um, I met with some, um, black and Latinx contractors and they said that you all have been meeting with them and trying to um help them learn the bid process and that you really are um doing this outreach. So I did want to let you know that folks don't always just talk about the negative stuff that's happening and I wanted to um let you know when the positive things are happening, but I I I didn't know about it um that these meetings are happening. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Um, I should also say that that is a constantly, that there's no closing period on that. So if you all are aware of contractors that are interested and want to know how to get on that list, certainly send them our way. There there's no open or closed period for that. It's sort of just a constantly revolving list.
Okay, so I will send you that I know of, um, that I would like you to add to the list.
Sure. Uh, and so to be added, obviously, they have to fill out, there's a one-page form and they have to provide us their insurance and their their um license.
Sure.
Um, so then the last one that I have, the overview is similar again to uh the ones that I've shared, but this is for the Healthy Homes Program, which is a more intensive housing repair program that is focused only on the qualified census tracts. For that, we've gotten a hundred and seventy-eight applications. We don't have anyone under contract yet, although we are anticipating going to contract relatively soon. At our last meeting, I did explain um the reasoning for that, but I will just kind of overview that again really quickly. These projects are more complicated. They look at whole home rehab, so those um inspections take longer. They also include lead inspections, so you're actually looking at two different inspections that have to happen. And then the other piece is these programs cover all of the historic districts in the city. So to get those projects to contract, there's sort of a whole separate approval process through the historic commission that we have to go through. And we do have several that are sort of working their way through that process. Um, it also includes the National Register Historic District, which is an even more complicated process. So we have, uh, just to sort of explain why you see those differences in numbers. That being said, for that, we've got um forty-seven percent of those total applications received have been received, have been reviewed or processed in some fashion. And uh seventeen of those are in the inspection phase, seventeen are in the income cert ta- income cert tax cert phase. And thirteen of those are actually ready for inspection and we're just coordinating that and those inspection dates with the homeowners and the inspectors. Thirty-six of those have denied or have been either denied because of income qualifications or have dropped out. Um, and I again don't have that specific breakdown, but certainly we could get that to you. Um, and this also includes folks that were sent over from the ARPA office who had marked on their initial ARPA Household Assistance Application that they were looking for housing repair um services. And so they kind of came over here, we reached out to them, asked them if they wanted to be part of the process. Most of them said they did want to go through this program. There were a handful of them that said, actually, we're all set for this program. We don't want to go through it. So they're they're included in this number two.
Well, and let's just uh quickly go go on to the map so that we can turn some time over to the finance team.
Sure.
Yep.
So, um.
That, thank you for the work and you got your work cut out for you too. You were in the finance team.
This is just something we wanted to share because we just recently previewed it at uh the Neighborhood Council President's Dinner. It's not public yet, but it will be. This is a breakdown or a map that shows where we are investing uh various federal funds. And the idea is that you'll be able to zoom in and see actual projects by neighborhood and get more information on what those actual projects are um by the funding category. So this is something that you guys had kind of been asking for for some time. And we've been able to do that in some fashion. We're still working on finalizing it before it goes live. That will be updated a handful of times a year is the plan now. And it will be something that both yourselves and the public would kind of be able to go on and play with. So I should say, these big bubbles represent many more small projects. So as you kind of zoom in, you'll see, you can actually see the project breakdown. Um, and then you can click on the actual project and get a little bit more detail on what it is and what that funding source is.
Perfect. I love this. This is nice. Counselor Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's exactly what I was gonna say. I actually think everything that you guys have showed us is pretty impressive and exactly what it is that we need to be doing as a city. And it ought to be data-driven and we ought to be learning from what it is that the data is telling us. So uh I I I mean, I I just think it's important and uh the fact that you all are actually beginning to do that work uh is extremely useful and it also shows a level of transparency that I certainly haven't seen in a while. So appreciate.
Where is this going live?
Thank you. We appreciate that comment. Um, it's a big part of what drives us over here. So um, that being said, uh, we don't have an exact date that's going live. I think our our goal is hopefully within the next thirty to sixty days. We're just trying to tweak it up and finalize it and get it where it's in a like things that drive me crazy are the colors in the first view don't match the colors in the bottom view. So I just wanted to be as user-friendly as it can be before it goes live.
Yeah, cause yeah, I understand that, but this is great. This is really great. Love this. Did you guys?
Updated part regularly.
Did you get a grant to put this together? Like, how how?
Yeah, this is actually being funded out of ARPA funds. That's what has allowed us to be able to do this.
And we're using, i- it's coming out of the NERF, the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Funding and we're we're pairing up with PBPC to actually uh help us uh undertake the work.
This is great. Thank you, guys. This is, I love this. All right. Now that I have given you all the praise that I can give for right now, um, you guys have done like great work on making it transparent, data-driven, easy to understand, like I love all that. On the other stuff, we gotta work it out, because I want to see who 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 they are and where they are located and what amounts. Long, when we get there, but I'm happy about the progress that was made on on the small business side and um all of the programs that you were traditionally running anyway. So I think that was a good split out and I think it also helps the finance team. So, um, thank you.
So and I should say on small business, we, you know, in terms of technical assistance, we sent out about forty letters last week to businesses that still need to get us documents with pre-filled forms that they're really just filling in, sending back to us. We anticipate having another, I think it's fifty within the next week that folks will get some sort of notification about what we need from them in order to be able to review their documents, again with those pre-filled forms. So it's fairly easy for them to respond.
And part of the counselors is just to, you know, also dealing with people just not having any understanding about where their application is in the process. So getting notified that, you know, we're looking to get additional information indicates that somebody's reviewing their application and it's under review and uh that additional information's needed on it.
Thank you. Counselor, your hand is up. Was that from before or you have something you wanted to add?
So, so sorry. Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
No problem.
I think we're done.
I raised my own hand by mistake. Sorry. Um, go ahead, Lindsay and Melanie. We're gonna turn it over to you. We got about twelve minutes. I don't want to keep you guys longer.
Sure. So, um, this will be Melanie's last update, unfortunately. Um. I know. Uh, so, um, I'll let her take over just to give you an update on what we're doing with the households.
I hope it wasn't ARPA, Melanie.
ARPA would have pushed me away. I'm telling you. Fastest train out of there.
Too funny. No, it was a pleasure working with you and thank you. Tomorrow is of my official last day. Um, so thank you for uh working with us and I know we've been able to work well together and providing you the reports and the information that you're asking for. And Tim Sheehan and his career are gonna do great uh continuing that.
But is it, it is a loss for you, because you did great when you were the um grant analyst as well, like very detailed, very like accurate, very transparent, have your stuff together. So it's a loss for the city, but we definitely wish the best.
I appreciate it. Thank you, counselor. Um, so I don't have a official report because as you know, I used to merge all of them together. So our office, obviously with my transition, is gonna have to come up with a ru- a new report specifically for the household so that you have that. So we will be getting that for you. But I can give you a high-level summary of what we're doing so far with the household. Um, so we have about seventeen thousand five hundred applications. And so these are all applications that have been received from the old version of the household application, the old version of the senior application and the new version of the household application. So all of those combined is seventeen thousand five hundred applications that we've received. And to date, we have awarded a one thousand seven hundred and forty-one applicants, okay? And so it's a big number, but i- in addition to that, uh, even larger number uh that we've been reviewing. So uh keep in mind that every week we're trying to do at least between one hundred to three hundred awards. Um, but about, I would say, four out of five, three out of five maybe better, uh, applications that we receive um, don't have the correct information, don't have the correct documents that are required. And so we review a lot more than what we actually award every week. We've actually had to put a pause on awarding because like I mentioned, we've been trying to do every week. uh, to catch up with the backlog. We've had to put a pause for two to three weeks, simply to work on the data validation, because we have noticed, uh, unfortunately, with any type of program that has to do with people getting funds, we are getting fraudulent activity that's being submitted, um, and so we're getting people submitting fraudulent IDs, multiple applications under their own with different social securities changing. And so what we're doing is trying to refine even further the review process as, along with the process in which we do to cut out checks, ensuring that we are not sending out checks to the same household, which is a, a, a rule, obviously only one check per household or the same person as well.
And that's the city rule, that's not a federal rule.
Correct, that's a, the city rule, correct, for the household, well, the federal guidelines is a household as well, the cash assistance is for households.
Okay.
So, the city's rule is the city resident one, uh, you have to be a Springfield resident, which we also get a lot of people from outside of the city applying for funds as well. Um, so we have finally gotten caught up with the data validation that we've been doing, so we are back. Uh, this week, actually, we'll be sending out an email today to our treasurer collectors and controllers office to get the ball rolling with the awards every week.
Okay, um, what about, so do you have a breakdown between the senior applications that were previously um, submitted? Do you have, how many of those have been awarded?
Yeah, we had, I, I, let me pull up the report that I gi- I didn't do for this one, but I did for the last one, I, I believe, cuz you asked for that one. Think I have it here, yeah, the seniors, there were five hundred and seventy-five oh, uh, applications under that category of that, and this is a report that I ran last month, so there shouldn't be much of a change. Uh, there has been two hundred and fifty-eight awards for the seniors out of the five seventy-five. It may have gone up a little bit more, obviously, if there has been some awards since then.
So two fifty-eight out of the five seventy-five, and these for, were for the old senior applications?
Correct, yep.
It doesn't include the combined one?
Correct, this is just the one that was the senior category.
And then you mentioned the old household application, um, the old household application was different than the fourteen hundred, right, so they could apply for, how many of those were there?
I don't have that breakdown, simply because we utilized the same spreadsheet to put the newer household ones with the older ones, so I don't have that breakdown like I do for the senior one.
And so for the old household applications, are they still being reviewed, like old applications?
Nope, they are, all fall under the new fourteen hundred dollar cash assistance. So we do, in reviewing them, prioritize the older applications that we have received. And so we have reached out to the household applicants that were missing information, and we have also reached out to all of the seniors. Um, back in, I wanna say August or September, we had sent out both uh emails for those that provided emails and letters to all of those that were needing more information, such as like an ID or proof of residency. We gave them a pre-stamped envelope to provide us back the info. We've gotten an overwhelming response from those providing back the information we, so we can award them.
So just to be clear, that someone could have asked for twenty thousand dollars, and you're saying, well, we got a new program now, so you can only get fourteen hundred.
Right.
Hmm. Okay, I have to think that one through. Um. If we can get the numbers of the old household applications, um, that would be great. Lindsay, I know you probably gonna have to um, um, give that information over, but I, I wanna know how many of those are in the pipe.
Yeah, we could definitely take a look at the, there's, based off of the timeline when we did the, the new application, I think it'll be easy for us to be able to distinguish which ones were like the old version versus the new one.
All right, um, Counselors, you have any questions there? Now, where is new business falling?
I do not.
That would be Tim Sheehan.
Okay, cuz we didn't hear a, update on new business applications.
Yes, Counselor, we, we started talking about new business, and uh, I said to you, I indicated that the priority was to process small business applications as quickly as possible, because of the, the complexities associated with new business being that a lot of them are home businesses and sole proprietors.
I, I remember the new, I just didn't hear the new business category, what about the economic development ones, or there was some job creation, economic development application, what happened with those?
That's not with my team.
Those are all transferred to you as well, Tim, those um have been uh discontinued in the awarding process or in the application process, but any type of application that has been received is uh part of what was sent over to them.
So what is it being considered? Like, what category are they under now, or? So he got the small businesses sent to him, and then he got the new businesses sent to him, so did you, did we put those under new business? The economic job positions?
I got nonprofits, and then we, we got the, the economic development. And there's one application that came in under economic development.
Yeah, so I.
Those have been discontinued.
Yes.
And is there a pause on the um household applications? Yeah, has that been done yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, can we strongly urge until you're a little bit more caught up, that, that is, um, takes place? We're gonna strongly urge it again. Again, and. Okay, and then finally, um, what is the balance of all ARPA? That is not committed, not in the program, and what was that balance?
Let me see how quickly I can find that.
About two minutes and thirty seconds. Counselor Hurst, you can ask your question while she um look for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just real quick, Tim, there was a gentleman that came before the council. I can't remember his name, but I also was under the impression that he was asking for some ARPA funds under one of those other categories, potentially build back Springfield. Uh, and it was, he was doing something with the mental health agency.
Yes.
And I believe it, is, is there any status on that, is that, has that moved forward, or?
Yes, it has, Counselor, it's actually been awarded by the mayor.
Okay, it did get awarded, do we have those la- those latest awards? I mean, have there been awards that, that, I can't imagine that there are awards that he won't publicize?
Um, it, it is not, it is not been uh awarded publicly in terms of a press conference.
Okay, it's common.
Just to explain that, Counselor, um, there were some timing constraints associated with that project in terms of the, the units had to move forward relative to development in order for MHA to actually meet its contractual obligations, so that award was made.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, it was that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
I actually think that's a great program, and it, it fits perfectly into ARPA, and it, it deals with, you know, one of the big issues that ARPA opines on relative to supported housing.
Hmm hmm, I think that's.
No, absolutely, absolutely, and I know he got caught up in the bottleneck, so it's good that, uh, it's good to, to see it move forward.
Yep, definitely. Um, all right, just wait.
So I have that number, uh, twenty-nine point four million.
Now, has there been any funds moved from the ARPA to go to other services like city departments or anything like that?
There's been a very small, I wanna say it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that was, uh, that's been allocated to IT for a home fiber study.
A home fiber study?
Yeah.
How much was that?
Hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, hundred and forty.
It was like one forty-seven.
Yeah. That's just another program that we just haven't gotten going yet.
The home fiber study?
No, the, like, the departmental.
Is that the study that um Counselor Letterman was um asking to be done?
Yes.
And I just don't understand how it ties into um ARPA, I don't. Fiber optic, well, me, data, cuz you gotta be home during ARPA, during.
Yeah, it was part of the broadband that was actually released as part of the interim rule, but again, um, it changed a little bit with the final rule, but as part of the interim rule, broadband was a, uh, and the digital divide was a big um piece of it.
Okay, Counselor Hurst? I want to have a friend a question, cuz I know it's two oh one.
Yeah, I know, um, did you, did you, Lindsay, give us sort of that overview document? And maybe you said you didn't have it, where it showed how much was allocated for each area, I know housing and Tim's team uh kinda did it for their respective areas, but I, i- it'd be nice to sort of get an idea as to what that looks like as a whole, because twenty-eight million seems like we're really burning through it fast, and I'm just wondering, like, how much has been uh allocated for our households? You know, and did we, I feel like the last time I saw it, we hadn't done that yet, you know, is that where a large chunk of the money has gone? And, you know, what, I just would like to see sort of an overview on what that looks like.
Yeah, we'll definitely, um, we'll put that together for you, and we can send it out as soon as we have it, and then we'll have it to discuss at the next meeting.
And I know.
Did the large allocation go for households? Sorry, Counsel, with you, did, was there, I mean, cuz that's it, I feel like we're at sixty, now we're at thirty, was, was households one of those large allocations that received an actual number, or uh allocated to it, or no?
Yeah, so as of right now, the budget numbers um for um household isn't set in stone, um, kind of just like the other categories, um. We have an idea, but um, I just don't wanna say for sure anything is set in stone yet, but I will get that information by the time I send this out to you.
But that is representative in that twenty-eight million dollar number, right? That is probably one of the reasons why it's so much lower, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And while I, I appreciate the work that Tim and his team did to put together um their reports, I still wanna see the old one. I, I wanna see that old report updated, that's the one I'm used to seeing, I get to see more information, I get to see who the businesses are, who's getting awarded. I kinda just wanna make sure things are happening in an equitable fashion, just wanna make sure that folks aren't getting preference over other businesses and things like that, which I don't think you guys are doing, I just need to see it for myself. Um, I just like to have fi- physical proof, um, so when I talk to the constituents, um, I'm telling the truth, and I'm not fabricating or making up any um, um, false information or something like that, so we can still get that report, that would be helpful. Um, Tim and your team, I can't wait till that, um, other little digital re- um, service come out, that is like the highlight of this meeting for me. Uh. I'm like, yeah, um, you're hearing us, you're hearing us.
We are hearing you.
So this was a great meeting, um, I'm glad that some of the pressure is taken off of finance also, because you still, guys still got like six, fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-eight to go through, and I can imagine how many people are like um, putting in fake requests, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really tough, and I hope you get more support you need to. Um, get through it, welcome. All right, well, if Counselor Hurst doesn't have anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, well done, finance, echo dev, housing, uh, great job, great work.
Great job, yeah, thank you. Melanie, good luck, good luck with it.
Yeah, appreciate it, take care.